Anything. That I heard it.
Yes. We embrace conflict and seek to resolve positively respectfully. We value diversity and invite multiple points of view in order to maximize the mission. We respect others' views and thoughts through active communication. Okay, so we're gonna start off with board development operating norms agenda setting. You want to get us started?
Sure. I I share with Natalie that it's part of this girl superintendent academy. Some of the work is, a lot of the work is around just governance teams and just models. And so I thought just off the heels of our retreat and we've talked about kind of taking what we've been working through the last couple of years, putting this down. And this came from a lot of school districts are using this. So I took a jump at just kind of my, my thinking about the things we're already doing. Some of the conversations that we've had over time and pulling that from the retreat. So I just kind of started and either thinking that the board, you might edit my notes or add additional notes. But it's not just the idea that if we have one kind of working guiding questions for operating. And then most boards don't necessarily, they don't put this into a board, board policy, but they might approve this as something that's important. So it doesn't make it into like a baby here. I just wanted to put that out there and see if some questions or want to talk through any questions, each of these questions.
I kind of thought we could go question by question and then add additional, because this was kind of about, again, just communication. And I think it's important to know that this is kind of what you would expect in terms of, or would like, right? From us.
And the real and vice versa.
Yeah, so.
So, yeah.
You know, so for the first one, right, governance matters day with the governance team. That seemed pretty straightforward. Was there, I mean, this is, the subject can't be discussed in a public forum, which should have been shared in public.
What are governance matters? Pardon my ignorance, because I understand what executive session is. I totally understand that is what governance matters, because obviously there's lots of discussions that we have that aren't part of executive session that I'm just trying to figure out. So we have a conversation on the street or on the phone or whatever. Those are automatically confidential, because one of the things I think we want to be as a board is open and transparent for our constituents. And so I'm just trying to understand what exactly, so I guess I don't know if governance matters. I mean, if it's, if it's an executive session, that's like they kick it, but then I would say executive session matters day with the.
Right, so because like today we're gonna talk about choice kids and we're not talking about choice kids.
It's also governance matter.
Right, that's what I'm, so it would be good.
What, what I kind of think about is when we're talking about confidential matters. So if it's something that we know is an HR issue, else that word we know might be coming. So confidential in that sense, if that's probably one of the biggest aspects I would imagine kind of following this, this category. So, for example, I was just sharing with Natalie something specific that I need to share with each of you as well. And that's not during executive session, but it is a governance matter and it would connect to policies around personnel.
So the big line, the big line is if the subject can't be discussed in a public forum, like if it can't be discussed, then it shouldn't be discussed in the public. Is that something we could agree to?
I was trying to figure out, there's a definition, because we don't set up, you know, real definitions, so it's going to be hard to follow. You don't know, because there's, I mean, I'm a fan of gray area and something, but in things like governance and if we're gonna say we're gonna, I, I don't want to say we're gonna agree to something and then that, because this makes sense, because we don't understand it. So, you know, you mentioned others, but there's a personal matter coming up. Well, that, that's kind of an executive session thing. I don't know, I wouldn't just have executive session.
No, it's not really.
It's not.
No.
FYI. But so I think it's probably fine just to delete that first sentence and just keep it to the other, the other sentences there. Discuss in person.
Then we don't know what we're talking about.
So if we, if I look at this again and just take up, you're right, governance matters very general. So if we change governance matters to confidential information, most likely HR matters.
Because expectation of confidentially, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. I think I'm in the next sentence, but explicit expectation or confidentiality among the team about items discussed in person and in written form. Well, isn't that almost everything? That's everything.
And so.
That doesn't make any sense.
I've discussed outside of our, yeah, because then you're right, it's pretty much executive.
But it's also open session, because some of that's been written for them. It's, it's, it's emails that get sent out in advance. It's the very good notes that Elizabeth does before the meetings to try to, I guess, prepare it and closer on the same page. I'm just not, I'm not sure that it makes, it makes sense. And again, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. I, I know the problem that we're trying to solve for. And again, I, there may be some push to try to limit discussion and limit what's available to the, to the public. But I think we should be the other way. We should probably be more open to the, as open as we can be, except for things that are explicitly benign. I didn't bring it with me this meeting, because I didn't have it on, on my list, but the nine things that, that cause you to be able to go into executive session. I mean, those are automatic and those are mandated by state law. So this just kind of seems kind of vague and nebulous, and I'm not sure, you know, exactly where, where we're going.
So, so this is really discussions between the governance team, be, be with you all. So the discussions that we have stay with discussions that we have, either if I call you and have to give you that that stays with us. So that's really the, because the information I'm going to be sharing with you or vice versa is going to be around governance issues, whatever those might be. So that's what it's really getting to, not things that we've talked about in public. Or I, I think the office industry, we really want to be able to talk about things, but there are some things that are confidential. And these, these need to stay that way. I, I want to tell you that this came specifically from like two other school districts. So I'm, I'm just giving it as a working, working topic.
Do you have their, not for tonight, because that's have a Reddit, that would be a good use for our time, in my opinion. But do you have their exact verbiage in their policy governance documents that we could look at? Because I bet they would be more specific than this, because this is just, this is going to be hard to follow. Matter of first one, take your interest on the governance team, whatever confessions base. Well, that's obvious. I mean, that everybody, everybody in the world, for the most part, understands that and make sure it doesn't happen again. Can you call that a rule? That's more like a, my, my mom called that like a sandbox rule, and then you learn how to play with each other as well in the sandbox. And I'm not sure that you put that into something that we would consider being close to a policy.
No, yeah, I mean, a guiding, guiding question or.
It's not a policy, it's just some, some operating. So no, I mean, for the most part, a lot of school districts have the same policy views that we have. So I definitely have that.
But I do feel like I have enough information that I know where you're going with this, Jack, and that we, it's not, that's a very big fact.
Yeah.
Because I, I do understand where you're coming from. And the other part is that I do feel like sometimes, you know, with the city and other groups, it'll, they'll be more, we get any wrong, like this is confidential, like confidential. And then that's clear as opposed to, you know, come to breakfast and, and just that that's helpful too. Because I do find myself doing that, like, oh, can I share that? I go back to the email, I'm like, oh, I can't, it's not, you know, not so much of a school.
I think what I'm just trying to say is that if Gus comes and tells me that a person grocery store has said something specifically, give me their name, because that might be helpful, that I'm then not going out saying, oh, this person in the grocery store is in this tow ornament. That's the agreement that this sort of norm is getting to. If that's important information is shared between us and matters, and how do we maintain that confidentiality? So I, I think it's a reasonable kind of operating guidance, it's how I, I operate in these things when I get information from you all. And, and when I give it to you, I trust that, so I have no doubt that it's, it's going beyond that. So, and sometimes it's a timing thing, right? Like if you send us something and say, oh, this is gonna go out on Friday, and you get it on Tuesday, you don't want us sharing it on Wednesday. So there's like that piece too, but I mean, a lot of that's, like I said.
Well, maybe that's the answer. I mean, if you mark something confidential, whether it be in a subject line or if like we had some information that's still on broadcast, but I won't talk about it. It's August eighteen. But so that's clear, we all understand that. See, that's, again, I, I think probably in this setting, the more black and white we have, the less gray is probably gonna help us to be more successful. So I think if it's a confidential thing, you tell us it's confidential, but again, anything, anything discussed in person and in written form, I mean, that's, that really is everything. So I don't think, I mean.
So.
Does that make sense?
Yeah, items, items identified as confidential and like, right, same.
I mean, anything involving staff, period, right? And then, again, then, I mean, we can get, I mean, we could get, I mean, if you wanted to say things about timelines, things that, you know, but again, things marked confidential.
And I want to say, like most boards, it took them a year to get to a lot of these questions. So I think it might be reasonable to, to start with one and kind of work through it. And some might be more important for us to answer tonight. But yeah, I think identifying what you said, if it's confidential in words or in writing.
Yeah, and I think it starts as a guidance. To your point, I think you start to implement and see where issues come up or where questions arise. Seems reasonable and because it's not a policy, we can shape it along the way.
And since I feel like communication is gonna be one of our themes this year, and this is a part of that. I was thinking about doing that as part of our sort of heading, kind of board. Board or reflection, or reflection. Maybe having a piece on communication each time to kind of be like, you know, have we communicated what we want to communicate to the public? If not, you know, just like a chat about that, because I think that's gonna be so.
I think it's a, it's a good idea, just as you were saying, and what comes up is we get involved in board work and then don't always think of that perspective. So just even asking the question. Okay, or we chat enough to the public, so I think would be appropriate.
I think two is fantastic. I don't think you need so much work, but maybe that's the one we talk, because the low hanging fruit is my administrative colleagues.
Oh, and so just, just the also update that I put in the last weekly update to you all that expanding the ability of others on the leadership team to have access and understand the types of communications I'm giving to all, just so that I continue to invest in their development. At some point, they may want to become superintendent, assistant superintendent, and just so they know, I'll redact anything that is confidential in that form. All we, we all also know that anything that's written, written is confidential, is corable. So I'm not going to put anything that is specific to an employment matter in those, those emails. But I just wanted to see if y'all are okay with that, if you have any reservations. You'll get it first and then I would share it with them.
I'm a huge fan of, of training, the, the saying about training people so they're able to leave and recruiting more, so they don't want to leave. I, I love that. What's an example? Would it be like the board notes that you put up before the meeting?
No, the board notes that I sent, like, the, I'm giving you kind of the new format where celebrations and what's coming up, what's on the horizon and dates, that, that, that communication, not the board notes for these meetings. The only people that get the meeting notes are Kindle, because it helps her with the minutes. This Friday, look, if there's some, a major emergency that comes up on Thursday or Friday, I'll just text you all and say, you're, you're updated.
That works into your flow, wasn't it? It's not out of place, I think, for you.
It's perfect, because my goal is to take whatever I've updated you all on and then communicate those things with staff and parents on Tuesdays. I really want to try to get those updates to them on Tuesdays this year, because parents and staff members' inboxes get filled on Thursdays and Fridays with school related things. So I think if I can communicate with y'all on Thursdays, then Thursday or Friday, I'll edit it for that Tuesday. But good, next one. Okay, what is the expectation for communication to this kind of board? Yeah, I like that as soon as possible, because obviously you don't want to stop. Just so you all know, like in these situations, I'll, I'll ask someone on our team to make sure that I don't forget to update you all, because a lot of things can go on. And so please make sure I circle back to the board at the end of this. And I would just say, if there's something that comes up and you feel like I haven't closed that loop, just say, hey, I'm, I'm going to sleep and I want to make sure that this is, I do that, that helps me as a reminder.
Totally define emergency, and that's, and I'm totally okay, because in emergency medicine, how we try to define it with insurance companies is anything that a prudent laborer would have considered an emergency, that's it. So emergencies are, I would be older, if you will, otherwise, insurance companies deny payments for also two crazy reasons. So we just leave the definition of the emergency in your, to your judgment. I, I think that's, that's probably fine. I don't really know, I mean, so we had the fire up the hill when we had a meeting, I guess that we won.
We had the, the one that I would say was the fail. I mean, it worked out okay, but it was when the shooting downtown and the city didn't contact you all about what was going on. So there's a disconnect between bus pickup and letting us go. And, and again, at that point, we're able to piece together what should have happened and then reach out and be like, hey, next time, remind, put us on the list.
And I couldn't notify y'all that morning until after I knew, I think that's when I said. But I, emergency in my mind is where lockdown, secure, that might turn into, into a lockdown. Some tragic tragedy that has happened that I know are current students or staff. And then anything that might make it to the news is sometimes a little gauge for me, because I want you all to know before it breaks as much as possible. You might want to come to campus, help, help out with some communications for the public.
Hopefully we're ready to be used. If we're communicating, so if we're communicating back to you, let's say, or we want to include all board members, so if I were to reach out, say, there's this information, I would definitely include board president, but should we make the practice to include the entire board, do you think?
Or. That's fine, I think you just, if you think of it, I mean, it's emergency, but you know, do not respond, right? Because it's once we start responding.
Right.
And if it's a big, but if you just send us, I think that's.
First as a statement.
Or like an emergency position.
Yeah, just looking at, you know, the board receiving information, they feel that superintendent should be aware of, which I guess could or could not be an emergency, although it's under the heading of the, of a district emergency. So maybe my head's in a couple places.
Good point.
But, so we find something to bring forward, just to definitely include board president, but also, I mean, I think it would be more of a statement to your point, so we wouldn't be discussing it, but.
Yeah, and I.
Include everybody.
I think so, if you just texted in that case, saying like, I don't know, it could be, we have received before, or maybe not with this group concerns about, let's say, suicidal allegations by a student or something. If you, if you text me, I don't know if you need to include everybody on that one, but maybe something else. Like if there's a fire of the past, just include us all. I may not know, you may know. I guess this situation.
Yeah, in judgment, that's, that's all under the heading of emergency. Okay, that makes sense.
And so I guess the thing that if it's an emergency, I guess maybe trying to check ones, don't apply it much to somebody playing and applying CPR to someone down the road, and I'm like, I'm two minutes away, I can help.
Right, yeah, yeah.
Maybe it's worth restarting. Okay, this is a good one, actually. So who will speak on behalf of the school district when it creates remain by these outlets? And in theory, like we're looking at hiring in person, so how would that, how would that work?
Basically, depending on the situation. This is the PIO, so any kind of delegation of that or being in front of the media may be seen through eye. It could be the case that we ask Natalie to come in as board president on some matters to speak there. But generally speaking, like we just got that article that just released around marijuana. Reporter reached out to Tina first and then connected with me. So in that case, they really wanted to hear from the board president. In this case now, you may say, speak to our superintendent, or you might say, as a board. So that's an example of one that could get a little, a little complicated, depending on which reporter, but other boards just direct it back to superintendent and then, or if we want to make a joint statement, make sure we're all saying what you should.
Yeah, to your point, I think it might depend on the topic as to whose voice makes sense in that situation, but, and that's where judgment comes in.
But it's still gonna be a coordinated effort.
Right. No, it'd be like, huh, all right, where, where should this voice come from based on situation at hand?
Speaking of Natalie, just brought that up, around the communications position. We think I mentioned, we have earmarked thirty seven thousand dollars this year for Shane Hagerty, the consultant, who was helping us for this whole last five months or so. She took in a full-time position with a company, he, he's been working with this remotely, Ohio. So he's taken a full-time position, and just to communicate with him and also talking with Natalie. We've gone, we've been, since we, we've worked with two different communication experts, both for about four or five months, and then they take full-time positions. So that's just a lot of investment, time, relationship building, we do great work, we've learned a lot. But just in talking through that, would prefer to have a full-time position there. And so we kept the posting at that same salary, so that we, we can invest in someone who's not gonna turn over all the time. So that position is posted, posted right now, have actually more, it's amazing, more applications for that position than for some of our licensed positions. So if we can invest in them, they can be here, we know they're not going to, to turn over very, you know, they have a dedication commitment to our school district, so I just want to share that with them all.
So full-time for thirty six million?
Yeah, we're, we're, it's like a tech position, so it's a tech salary position. So entry level or communications with a background in design. So that applicants have strong, some, some strong backgrounds, coming with some similar salaries.
Well, so that's integrated in social media presence and communication, then you're getting quite a bargain. That's hard to come by.
Yeah, we post, see that they would help with the board, board communication. So when we get into community engagement, they can help promote those, they can offset love. Do you want to do coffee or talk to the plaza? Anything else that I'm just, yeah.
I don't think so. All staff members, Miguel, make sure that we get the word out, everything. Awesome.
That's cool.
This one, so how will the governance team speak about, are we good, are we good on that?
Yeah.
How will the governance team speak about a just conflict venture, so honestly? There's a Brian. I think it's a hard one, but I think some, each cases, because as I say, it's not as easy for them, right? Like with the cost scale conversation will be, I mean, be scaled.
You know, but it's harder when we're in those gray areas. I bet you had a, like contracts are much easier than other things, so.
I mean, honestly, I mean, we know the laws that it's up to the individual person to determine what it's not going to be against. I think a board member can raise it, right? Say, you know, is this a conflict of interest or the person decides whether it is or not.
Likewise for me too, if I feel like I need to tell you all of a conflict of interest, my side, I would do the same, make sure you all are aware of that. So I don't know if that's something, I mean, I, I think the conflict of interest is, is something that would be, is outlined somewhere, right?
No, it's, it's BCB.
Yeah, so that one is in our policy, so.
I think that there's, I think that the comma, potential, actual or perceived is all different depending on the person, so. It's very easy if it's a mother-son relationship, that's, or whatever the case might be. That's an actual relationship, and others might be harder.
Yeah, certainly family things, relationship things, I mean, those would all be potential conflict events. So this, this policy just didn't, we're talking about just the school board, so that really, I think it's, it's reasonably well outlined in BCB. I mean, I actually looked at this before the meeting and I didn't, but.
What's the, what is it?
And yeah, this would, this would clearly, it'd be automatically discussed in public unless it was on HR issue, advice from the attorney. One of the things, one of the nine things, again, that gets you in executive session, so I'm not sure. I mean, we can certainly have it in there, but it's almost redundant based on what we have in policy. And I think as we've learned, we don't want to have conflicts, we don't want to have policies or guidelines that may, might be in conflict with each other. I think we approved conflict in the first time recently, March sixteen, twenty twenty. I was on the last meeting before COVID.
Anything else on this one?
So I mean, so I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I just listed the, I think it is redundant, but I do think that, you know, again, it's just, I mean, I, it's, we live in a small community, so there's just always gonna be this conflict. Always just be aware of that.
And for these guiding questions, I'm assuming the conflicts of interest we're speaking of are, are referencing the board and Elizabeth and not district-wide.
Right, exactly. Like if I had a, a close friend, let's say I had a close friend in the school district, there was an employment issue that came up, I would want to make sure that you all knew how I'm handling that or not, you know, what do you want to do in that situation? So that's how I see it.
And any conflicts of interest within the district, that would be between you and the district. So if that situation was happening, that wasn't you, but was a teacher and you know, that had a friend or a hiring person or whatever, a principal and a friend, that would be you and you're working with them on, any potential conflicts there.
Yeah, on the administrative side.
Right.
Yes, because I, I think that's what you're saying, not, not as a board matter, but.
Right, the board would be not involved in that, that would be between you and, and the board is, but the natural conflict.
So ideally, the person with the potential conflict is the person that addresses it first, right? They either say, you know, I have such a conflict, but I don't think it's a good fact, this conversation is why, but they're addressing it. But it's a small board, it's like I would say, hey, I feel like you might have a conflict.
Absolutely.
Is that okay?
And honestly, polite and collegial.
I think, I like what you said, we maybe honestly, politely, collegial, that's nice language there.
And so to follow up on Gus's point, so for the staff, that's TBEA, it's a little sick, but I know you like that.
I appreciate, I didn't think.
I don't have that. No, I don't think we, we're doing on the first read, we've done the first read on that, we've done the second, we don't know whether or not I can.
Twenty-second.
Okay, sorry.
So, um, I just, I I just edited the last part and it said, see policy, B C B. See, I can say the board director should facilitate these conversations, honestly, politely.
Right, next one, that the communications time is managed like someone.
Sounds fine. That's actually a good working method because. We probably sadly most pair of phones with us, but don't necessarily have our emails pulled over.
And additionally, if we have an upcoming meeting, you know, I guess something happened today and we have a meeting now, there's no reason to.
You all want a text when I've sent out to me how like our board notes, like. Meeting is live or or do you just kinda check it on here and I? I don't know what your preference is.
I just a question, I apologize.
So like when board notes come out for for these meetings, do you wanna, I can text you saying, hey, just send you an email, y'all just check it.
Yeah, that stuff I check, uh, if it's emergency. I don't check that email as frequently as I check my other three emails.
So if there's an emergency, I'll just check your email.
Yeah, that'd be great. The ads for dozens of, I know they're coming, so, yeah.
Uh, that's free.
Okay, uh, let's, we gotta know. Oh, board members handle matters of concern like we know way through the community. Kinda took this from our last retreat that.
And I think some of this may depend on exactly. What it is, I mean, if there's leaky faucet or there's a pipe break in front of the school. Um, whatever that, hopefully somebody else has noticed that before. If right it, but I don't think you say, because if somebody has a concern. Um, about the superintendent, we obviously would have been that to you. So if we leave the language exactly like it is. Then we violate it. If we didn't come to you with a concern about you, so I don't know, um.
I think it depends on what type of concern you're talking about, right?
Yeah, my comment was not one size fits all, whatever amounts to that. So the majority of the time, that's probably gonna be the case.
Yes.
And I think we already. I guess I should have. What we had in the transition of the brain, so.
Well, I know, like for me, I guess I was trying to think of things like the stand-up manner too, so. Um, you know, was that I reached out to them about it before the school year? And then, um, they said they just wanted to meet with me. Would you all like to know? That they asked me to meet with them? Is that something that would be helpful in terms of? You knowing what meetings I'm attending outside of. These board meetings, I mean, is that a thing? I mean. I mean, I I'm not, I can't represent all of you for that meeting, so that's not. But is it helpful to know that? Or do we wanna talk through those things before they happen, or do you trust?
It to me, it's what I'm less concerned about the meeting. Um, but I might like to know. What came out of it, or even know before in case I had something to add or or something like that. Cause that's a part, I think of. Of engagement is learning. You know, people out in the world all have different perceptions and and ideas and concerns, and so. The more we can know of them, I think the better we address them as a board.
Or as a board, you could say, you know, who'd you meet with up to you?
Yeah. I mean, yeah, I mean, that's possible, um.
I don't know, I mean, I'm just trying to think of like. I mean, and for me, I can't think of a time when it wouldn't. When when, I mean, I guess the Manny Awards, right? You're like, me and Natalie, we love the Manny Awards.
And we'll say please and thank you. For the record.
Right, I mean.
So I don't think we need to know about a meeting in advance, if they're just asking to meet with you, they're not asking to meet with us. Um, I I think the guest is maybe helpful to know the outcome, so. What did they say or what did they share? Yeah, and that's, that's really what I I'm interested in, cause that, we had that situation. Where we met with this group. They said they're meeting with Elizabeth, so I didn't bring anything forward, I kinda kept thinking. We would all kinda chat about it. So what does that forum look like? Is that in a regular meeting that we would brief on that, or how is that done? Because. That's, I guess, the.
I mean, it's a, it's a weird thing, or something that's theory, a casual meeting, but on the record, or, or, you know. Yeah. I I think this one is topical, this one I think I would like to move back to. But I do feel like this is gonna be ongoing, but I would like to talk about it, so.
I think, uh, for for me as your sole sole employee, that those meetings, I I can't imagine. There being a time where the superintendent wouldn't.
But you there, but I think it's unfortunate, and I think that's less effective, in my opinion, but I. I just, if you're not invited, I don't know how to do that.
Or do you not hold the meetings? Do you, how do you, or do you have two board members there? There's. I don't know, I mean, I, there's not much I don't have a hard time hearing and for taking, so.
Well, it wouldn't be about that, though. I think it would be about the the individual and what their. You know. Yeah, with what their comfort is. So if they didn't invite, it's probably because they weren't comfortable, not so much that you couldn't take it. But I'm all for transparency and authenticity, so more of that. That we have the better. Uh. Having two people is probably a good idea.
What if you had ten different groups right now in the same same. Same happens, what college would that?
I guess we'd share community engagement. For Natalie. I think as a second board member, that actually might be reasonable, if if the people that are asking for the meetings. Say, can you bring somebody else or? But this table, I mean, with just you and nobody else, then. I think, I mean, you don't have to take the meeting, obviously, but but I think if it's a constituency.
I mean, it's highly, I mean, in any, I mean, my goals, I, it's very unusual, I would agree, some of which sounds, this is for a copy, it's highly usual that I would say no. Um, I mean, I might not say it's a second or third time, but. Yeah. I think this one's gonna be ongoing, particularly because we are trying to become more. Community or community. I mean, do you guys agree with that? I don't think we'll be able to solve it, probably ever. Figure out, well, that one didn't work, let's try it again.
Well, and if we do, if we are able to, you know, we talked about it to you, uh. Uh, devices that you use for community engagement, if we have something like, uh. I did an initial meeting with Lindley to develop. A regularly held, uh. Uh, restorative circle. And if that is just a fixture that people know they have this opportunity to go and have a voice, that that handles a lot of these things, because. That's a big problem with us in our human system, is when we don't have a voice, we feel. Someone's doing something, you know, that. We don't have a say. Uh, so if we have some of those things happening. This might make a lot more sense, we could refer. If you had ten, then maybe you'll invite them to the restorative circle that's held. Every two months, so whatever. That might be an option. To work through, so I'm all for the on hold and, um. Looking at it further.
Yeah, so I'm going through something with another organization where I obviously think if I responded emails. They make them longer, I do not give this a chance, but I'm pretty short with them. And I think if I actually written a longer response, maybe it works out better. And it's like, not.
You're not Harry Maney, you just said this.
So it's not always a crazy ask.
Yeah.
No, that's a regular.
Um, it's a couple of board members handle matters of concern like on their way. Um, the way this is. Email, day-to-day operations.
I can capture your concern in the previous one.
My emails are easy, are you gonna easily get forward, like I would pay.
From that last line, superintendent is the subject. Uh, kinda connects to the question before, right? Uh, so we can keep that on hold, maybe use that.
I do have a question, actually, so. You know, I tend to just forward everything I get to you, right? But I know that, you know, Tina has said at various points, sometimes that her parents, she. She'll say, have you talked to your teacher first? Have you talked to the principal first? And I tend not, I tend to spoil it to you. Is it? Is one better than the other? I mean. I know sometimes, you know. Teachers upset to me like, why didn't the parent just come to me? Why did they go directly to the superintendent, right?
In my mind, because it's going to all that, it's better expert to go. To me, because then I can be the one who closes that loop backwards, you all. To say, yes, in this. This email, I just asked the parent to, if they had talked to the, to the principal. That's my kind of initial thing, but. Just cause so I can close the loop, yeah, if not, you may not ever get.
But the loop closure thing, I think is a separate thing. My initial thought is that there should be, um. A a process where we are reaching out. To the, for instance, to the teacher and not going of them, to give them an opportunity. Because a lot of times, it's a misunderstanding or. You know, just outright. Kid said this, didn't happen, here's the, here's the proof or what happened, um, so. Rather than escalate something. If it's already escalated, um, and goes to you, then I would assume. As you just said, you would tell them or ask them, have you talked to? Whoever's appropriate, is the teacher, the principal, or, you know. Whoever they should be. Because that's also them teaching the. The populace, where they, where they should go, for what? In my opinion. And those relationships between your teacher and the parent, which is good. Yeah, for sure, and then you get that feeling if if someone is skipped over. And you do feel that, like, oh, you went like. Three or four levels above me for something that I could have handled. Yeah, I feel silly, you know, so that happens. Interesting, so Elizabeth would talk to the Soviets, uh, Mr. Jones sends you an email about. Johnny and something with his teacher, and then you pour that to Elizabeth, and Elizabeth would call Mr. Jones and say. And that domain, if you thought about talking to the teacher to resolve this. And then, and then you're not in the middle of it, because you shouldn't be at that level. I mean, really, that that is the. You handle a principle, lowest level possible is what I was, right, so. So you just facilitate the communication between the two involved parties and not have.
Then all I simply do is reach back out to Natalie, say, here's what I did on this side. Let me know, let me know if you need anything else, I'll tell you anything else, James.
Okay, all right, let a message, let's be sent on behalf of the Board of Education, who deliberate, um. You know, board president.
That little strange one, because sometimes y'all do send them out, but those have typically happened in. Executive session or like a resolution that y'all are gonna write, so. I think there are some one-offs where it would come from the board president. Oh, sorry, this really sucks.
Well, we have, and they haven't really discussed this either, but like when it comes to things like public comment, right, but sometimes that we're thinking follow up on. But sometimes there aren't. And sometimes, I mean, we can say, like, we can't, we don't really respond, but we could say. Um, you know, you could say, I I'll be in touch, right, for this. You know, whatever it is, and, um, and I guess the same would be true if it is us, usually it's not us, they could be us. And then. We could say that. For cause one of the touch.
Yes, yes.
You know, so then there's some, I mean, is that? I don't, I'm trying to think of one else. Well, I was thinking about this too, just. You know, to take off the gear, it might be worth giving every some kind of a statement of the bulletin from the board. Um. You know, and so. Again, I don't, I also not. Of me, but obviously you all, in that case, you're good, because we have time to do that, but that's. Um, and I'm working on it with not just me, others on the steering committee to. Hopefully have some kind of proclamation or resolution for you all to review for that August, for the second meeting. But so you might wanna. Do that in conjunction with that resolution, but yeah, I agree.
I think of one of our policies, I can't, because we have two policies on on rules and responsibilities of. Board of Directors members and officers, and the one I'm looking at doesn't have it in there, but I think of the other one. It does say that the board president is the spokesperson, so. Again, it's somewhat redundant, I don't know if. You know, we need to flush it out anymore, because some of the stuff. Is gonna be kind of responding, or some of the stuff might actually be part of board action, or I need to, you know, I can't respond right now, I need to. Talk to my colleagues or whatever.
Right.
So we defer that to your, to your judge.
And often, you're gonna be probably coming to us.
Just so you know, for a public comment, I I tried to reach out to each public comment. To you, just to follow up to see what I can do differently, and I, um. Yeah, thank you for, thank you for speaking, is there. Therefore, there anything else you'd like to talk about or like, so just to extend that hand across the aisle. And or collaborate, sometimes it's ideas. I'd love to know more about what you're thinking or ideas, so it really is a good opportunity for me to connect, did you guys know?
I think that's good, because that's one of the more awkward things, with the public comments, like, it's going anywhere, because nobody says anything, and then it's just like.
Some are harder, like it's like a different circumstance, but for the most part, I would know you're feeling that way, thank you for speaking.
That's good.
I took this one straight from the, like I said, from the other school boards, because we haven't had this yet, but. Thought it was a starting place.
Yeah, so I do agree with this, but but I also think that, um, sometimes when it doesn't work, it's because we haven't. I think fully talked through, so that maybe the people that. Were on the losing side of the vote, um. It's not done, and I don't know if it'll already be done, but I mean, I think someone, I feel like if we keep. Uh, maybe it comes out, you have to be like, we're done, whatever, but. I don't, I don't know, I I think that's. I feel like with other things, sometimes I'm like, so sick of like one time vote, then you know. You can lose your life, all right, whatever, I don't know, we've talked through everything.
And it's points on the issue too, and now for the issues, so I think, I think being on the board does not inhibit the First Amendment free speech. Um, so I'd be against if that's what this is trying to do, I think if a decision by the board is made and it's. Four to one, just say for random example, then the one, they say that the board voted to approve. X, Y, Z, but the one still has their right to free speech. And I believe that's actually like in that thing, written in seventeen.
Well, I think that, but there's a way to say it, like, but you can say, you know, the board approved this.
Correct.
And you don't have to always say, but I voted against it, you can say the board approved this, and then if you, if you wanna talk about the issue, you can.
Right.
And then you can explain different things, but that. You don't, I I feel like there's a way to not always run it like. I wanna always be listed as the person who voted against it, right, to the point that you're like, the board approved it, and then in my own time. I'm not moving digital.
Right.
Right? Um.
Totally.
But when you're representing the board, it's like.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
When you represent the board, the vote, the board voted. This way, the vote, or voted that way, as an individual, I think that's right, I think that. I think that's reasonable, I don't know.
I mean, I don't know.
I don't know if it's actually spelled that out, or if there's any. I I'm not sure I know the value to this, unless it's to try to limit people having free speech, which obviously I would be against.
Yeah, I don't know if legal.
I know some, some boards ask if there's a dissenting vote to ask for a written statement of why, so. The goal is to to get to, while people have opinions, but by the time you get to vote, hopefully you're making. Yes, votes, because we all, there's, it's not because we wanna have. Support votes, but that's gonna now kiss the punch, but. How do you get to a place where you forward, is, I think, also, some boards do say if it's a split vote. Then all board, all board members have to say.
Then all board, all board members have to say why they vote yes, or why they vote no, so you could figure out how to get to the middle. And have a yes vote if it's appropriate. Maybe it's not appropriate. It's for its efforts. Forward, and that's okay, too.
I think historically, we actually tried to do that.
It's our guide and.
No, not much of a watch. I'm a lot of guy right now.
I think if we think about like if it's something, or maybe the board, if you think it's going in this direction, maybe. Communicating process, if it's going to go that way, could be helpful.
It might be helpful to write affirming and dissenting. It's just so. One for the board, for the individuals to express or get off their chest why they. Thought this way or that way. But also for. Anyone else to see what the thought process was.
Kind of the two man being that, I think, that is an option.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Roll spinning grains.
Yeah, it's not going to be necessary.
Yeah, so it would be something. I mean, some of these things, I mean, it's going, you know, let's stay around it. It's just.
Yeah, to me, this would be a. A big issue that is probably needed.
Can you think about just right around the corner with vacancy, with, because there's only four people voting? It's split voters.
Hopefully, we have time to talk about that tonight. I hope.
Yeah, it's not technically on the agenda, but you all have yellow folders.
Because you spent fifty minutes on this.
I think it's important.
Yeah, and I agree.
I really do. I mean. I don't want to say. I don't know. I mean. Can I ask, do you want to revisit this in the next work session? And the only one I think was the the first one, right? It's the will review.
I guess, yeah, let's just, what's our good.
All pretty back on since September.
And depending on the risk of the agenda, since none of these really are emergent issues, maybe we just do one at a time, so we don't take all the time when we have other. Kind of significant issues out there, including getting a. A new board member.
And we can even do it.
Oh, that's a good idea.
Thank you, guys. Okay, the DAC charge questions. I was supposed to meet with Brooke Kotein yesterday, but there's some of our schedule. We're going to meet next week, so I just wanted to give you heads up. My goal, my hope was that I could have, we could have talked and kind of. Worked through these questions, even edited a bit more, but so she hasn't had a chance to read those yet.
No, I feel like the sort of right on the only, I mean, this is, I have no problem with these these absences. I just feel like I'm so specific, but. I'm just hoping we have enough to sit on that topic, maybe. It's like, no.
I think I think that will be especially. Teachers and parents will be a part of it. I'd say this is one of, in our listening sessions, especially at our elementary schools, absenteeism really affected teacher. Teacher job satisfaction faction, because it took away so much time from them when they, when there was significant absences. So I, um, we heard that every single time there was a listening session, that's so I.
I think it's like in high school, too, wasn't it?
Yeah, yes.
I mean, I think I I heard, I didn't hear about it in elementary school, but I heard in. At high school, there were lots of, lots of kids that were absent, particularly not getting work done and. And still graduated, so you have to kind of balance that stuff out. Didn't we just pass something about this too? Last month, because I think we passed it and.
Oh, yeah.
Like, because I mean, I've got, like, I've got a kid, I guess we're being quite, it's going to be at a soccer tournament in St. Louis, and she's in this, like, three days of school, but that won't be excused after. That's okay with me, that it's not excused answers, but.
We haven't done any changes yet.
But having that act like that, that'd be great, having some parents and staff in the world that especially quite makes really good jobs.
And again, that communication piece was key, and then less attention.
Think these are great, great questions off of. Up with the feedback from. From staff, from parents, and just our next level of work.
Yeah, because I'm curious about. You know, because you hear different things, right? Like, as people are aging, they want to continue work, but they want to work for a time. Like, what generationally are different? Why are so many people interested in this communication job? Is it because it's like leading some perfect?
Yes.
Like, artsy, rea, and those people are looking for. These types, like, it's just kind of interesting.
We were. I think you saw in the the communication that I sent out to you all yesterday, our parents. Saying that we're in a much better shape employment wise than most school districts, and I put the link to that actual physical science position. We got an interested parent apply. Today. Has some significant qualifications, but to that point, we were almost looking at. Are there employees who would, it's easier at the high school because they do A day, A day, B day. You could say, do you want to just? Work on A days? Do you want to just work on B days? You can only do that there. But I think we have to put the things together. Especially this sort of really hard to fill positions where you're getting. Much fewer applicants.
So just following the intent, we actually last month passed J H, which is the student.
Jay.
So we did that. Yeah, we got that. We had the second reading, so that's actually. Done and approved. And it defines what excused absence was. And it doesn't include. If, you know, the the example I escaped.
I thought it was.
It happened to the excuses. From the last meeting. So it doesn't mean we can't. Change it. It just means that we find excuse out based on that meeting, and I voted during the second read, we voted in favor of that a block.
My internet just moved on.
Oh, I haven't.
Hold for a few minutes.
No, I'm glad you did that.
But that question is good. Yeah, sorry.
Well, I do want to look at the last meeting.
I just shared the password with you, Elizabeth.
Because I didn't hear from you on this. Do you have any? Eighteen.
They're all, they're all fine. Honestly, my my biggest question on these DAC questions are, it refers back to our previous DAC questions. So that's what I'd be most interested in is, and. Because of those, I think were big culture shifting things, trauma informed care, D E I. And the curriculum. Were big things. Obviously. I I don't know where we stand with that. So. Are those going to live on and continue a a culture changing, changing effort?
Yeah.
So what's the closure on the trauma form? Was there a vote like for the for the curriculum? I think I know they picked map curriculum. I do remember that. I'm not the curriculum expert, so I don't. I wasn't supposed to touch that shit, but the curriculum, we did cut. That seemed like that was kind of. More or less closed out. I don't know from the trauma forum, because we got money for a trauma forum district, and it's grand.
Yeah, so we're in year two of that grant. So last year, like forty, forty staff were trained. This year, we onboard another forty, and it's a, it's a three year grant. So, but I'm. It's work that just is ever on.
Yeah, because it would be beyond the grand. It would be how we. Work together, how we treat each other, how our policies are reflected and. Re-traumatizing, understand, and our discipline policies and how we treat discipline. So that's why I'm just curious about. Not only the training, which will be. Be nice. It's unfortunate, of course, money wise, that it's so spread out. Because not, training is the beginning. So understanding is the beginning, and that takes. A while. And then starting to actually live it, you know. And then have a district. You know, you get to a point to to stamp an organization, like some organizations I work with, we do that. It's a pretty extensive process. To show. Not only we did, we teach our people and educate them, but here's what we're doing policy wise, and we do regular checkups to see how we're, how we're moving this forward. It's a big culture change chip. And so, yeah, it's, to me, it's an ongoing thing, as Liz has said. So I just be curious, does that live on? And. Of course, resources are always nice. So if you have free resources, and parents that. And and that people that would would be available to see, hey. How far did we get? And then what else would we like to see? Getting feedback from people in the system, what's working, what isn't, what are areas to. Pay attention to. I was about to say.
Do you want to add at our our leadership retreat last, just last week?
Yeah.
Uh, we had that two, two experts from areas who come and spend time with our our leadership time around. Self-care and community care. Paula Herd with the El Paso County Public Department, and she. Does a lot of work with the neurosuprenential model, so she's going to continue to work with our leadership group. After this year, a hundred percent of our leadership team should have been able to go through this. This professional development book study and other things. So. I think. That's super important for us. And then through the neurosuprenential model. We do have a platform. We have trainers of trainers. So the idea that we're not depending on other people to outside of our organization to do that work, we have those trainers. And then just another example of, I think, continued work is, for example, the Children's Hospital connection at what sixth grade resilience program. This year, they're going to have. Seventh graders who are peer mentors, and they actually did their training today. So. I I think what's beautiful about this work is that it's just, it just grows and grows and. I don't know if you have a full, never fully make it, but it's just ongoing work, especially when you have new. People to a school district or new roles, you just have to onboard and bring bring them on.
I love the integrating, you know, kids into this practice and and understanding, because we have talked about that, actually, having. Having rooms where where kids can share with each other. This. Trauma is about disconnection from self and isolation, and when we can share with other people, even. We find support, we build more strength than when we're alone and we can't lift these things out. One question I have, when you mentioned administration and everything, which is great, having top down is is really important. But also, I'm curious if security isn't included in that. So those types of roles, that's also very critical, because. You know, just working with the police chief is like, you know, this is how we were trained, man. I mean. And so what you're saying makes perfect sense. We just weren't trained this way. And so we do come in heavy handed. We do come in with fear as our weapon, and and we're carrying a weapon. So all of that, there there are situations would warrant. Certainly, those those people in security roles that might have that training and background to see a different perspective would be important.
You're right. And so it's a good, good example of that is today, the Colorado School Safety Resource Center came in and trained. Folks on the risk and threat assessment process who hadn't previously been trained, but Jamie is there. Just ensure that who needs to be in the room, because administrator oftentimes is not, because you want to make sure you understand the situation. They might be brought in at some point, but it can actually increase the stressor for everyone involved. So they are, they are a part of it, and. There, what I appreciate about our safety team is that they care about these things as well. It's not. It's like, it makes sense. It makes sense. But ongoing work for all of them. So you had mentioned something that came to me about having like a DAC. Position on the website that would kind of list the questions. And so it'd be kind of great if, again, we could capture previous questions and need an update where we are. Kind of on that, because I do feel like. Again, in order to continue to get participation from. These folks that are facing these questions, I think part of it has to, it has to live on, right? Past, like their work has to meaning and.
Yeah, some things like we said, we'll have a. A finish and these things will will never end.
Yeah. Like salary, like if we're looking at. Discrepancy with salaries, there is an endpoint. We know there's always work to do. Yeah. So what I did, what or what Kat did, she posted on the website. It's actually, we put it under the Board of Education, because I think that's where where it should live. Is that right? That one?
That makes sense. It's under the boards and subcommittee.
It might be frozen right now because. Not active yet. Well, it's it's there, but I think that's.
Okay.
That's a great idea to put the previous year questions in. Last year, in our DAC, we summarized the things that we had accomplished and what was, what we're on going.
I mean, I mean, obviously, that's official work, but. Long term.
Yeah. And then we talked about posting the minutes there, too, so that anyone can see, and then community members. We'll still have salaries and compensation, buildings and grounds, and teacher, or class license evaluations. Those subcommittees will still have them.
And I think with that particular case of posting the minutes, that was a direct request from the community. Yeah, if they said we can't. Can't get away from work during the day.
Okay. Anything else on my last questions? Thanks to Marcia and Connie and Eric. Put those together. All right, our hundred fiftieth anniversary. Well, I won't take too much time. I just wanted to make sure you all wear the upcoming dates and then. If you have any, anything you all want to do special from the board, but. So we have on Monday, will any of you be there? I know Natalie's going to be there for the staff. Welcome back.
Okay, can be the ultimate.
So the agenda will be, we'll introduce. Introduce folks. We'll have some alumni who will be there. And then some students, students are going to also speak, and then we'll kind of wrap up by about eight forty five. Our goal is to then move to the bleachers and take a picture so that we can kind of commemorate this. Working through those. So also, homecoming parade is going to be. A big deal. I think that's actually should be the. Thirty and the thirtieth, yeah, the thirtieth is right. So thanks, Natalie, for catching that. It's going to be a big day. We're inviting all alumni from all the graduating classes that are here, and so. Hopefully, you could be there for that. If you'd like the board to be in the parade, I think that would be fun, too. Get you some Cadillacs or some. Then the homecoming game, and then October first, alumni and friends of Manitou Springs School District, Tim Haas. And this, our steering committee has worked to have an event at the trading post. So. We're hoping to just, you know, Carly and Natalie have been leading the Manitou Springs Education Foundation for years. And it was really reduced to just a few people, and Carly just transitioning out of that. So we're we're getting that going again. So if you have any folks who would like to be a part of that foundation. We're hopeful that this group can be running this event, so it'll be like a kickoff to that foundation. We're bringing back the M back up on the mountain, so. That will be fun. Angie Glass King, probably two years ago, had said, hey, what do you think about this? And. Working with the mayor, with the city administration, so that'll be fun. Let's see, doing some community service, give backs to this, to the community. And then we're working on the Mustang Way, Way, it's connector trail. So if any of y'all, when, when those events come up, I, I think these are great community engagement events. So. It's the spot, if you're looking in the end zone of the track, but. Near the rocks, you know, it's pretty dodgy and you basically, you you can go up to the right, but it's it's pretty dangerous. Students get on the the trail that way. We're going to bridge it around, and that's in partnership with Manitou Cats. Actually, that Manitou Springs Community Foundation just provided some funding for that. So. If you want to contribute one of those days, and then just other events. Manitou Elementary School also turns a hundred years old. So if you want to go to their event, that's also, that's next week. Any ideas that you all have, what you want to? Maybe do as a board? Or just come to the events is is great as well.
Yeah, I just wanted to, and it's just a, you know, the city's been doing this, too, is that idea of just being a little sensitive, a hundred and fiftieth anniversary, that idea that some indigenous folks can give us and say, yeah, maybe it's not a party. So. Just if there's any that we're aware that it's kind of a celebration.
Thank you for bringing up that. Still finalizing the agenda for Monday. We can use our land acknowledgement at the start of the. Anything else? That's all I have for that. We've ordered some, some like commemorative items from staff, and so we'll get those to you as well. Policy discussion. I asked Marcy to come because I wanted to. Make sure our expert, so I don't know, Marcy's the director for, executive director for we post bonuses. For executive director for we post bonuses. Uh, we have received this rule change. Uh, July one, we, you know, we have a, a circumstance that we're working through in our, um, choice process. But uh, just wanted to make sure that you all know what's going on because it is fundamentally different from what we've, you've ever done. And not only Manatee, but all school districts. So can I let you watch us?
Yeah, we received this uh, fact sheet that you got there from CDE like the Friday before it was the live fourth weekend. And said, guess what? It's immediately in effect on June thirtieth. So we all quickly went to discuss, what does this mean with our state director? Um, and really, I mean, the guidance is there, but I don't, we really don't think they were looking at the rural perspective or the small district perspective. When they developed this, because as if you read through it, it really talks about intra-district transfers between students with disabilities. Um, within a larger district where we would always have the authority to be able to. Um, place a student in a certain school that would best meet that student's needs or meet their needs in an IP. So basically in a nutshell, this is an anti-discrimination rule. So that with choice, there's no discrimination based on um, their disability status. So five oh four and IP's. So we've had to change our, our practices across the state as well as this said everywhere. To remove any questions about plans or disability status from the initial choice application. So we're really just looking at capacity issues right away, um, to see where our schools and grade levels have capacity. And then we move forward to see if there's any other in the registration process, um, if there's any plans or. Um, status that we need to look at to determine how we meet that student's needs in our district or if we can. So that's in a nutshell, kind of what we're having to quickly change and, and adjust to. And train staff around and, and Colleen and I work tons together, uh, to make sure registrars, principals. Everyone that might take those initial phone calls from uh, family members would, would know this information and not ask that status right away. To avoid any kind of discrimination. So.
I just can't say enough for the expertise of Marcy and Colleen and uh, just the pivot that our registrars have had to make. I can tell you, it's, it's putting families in a, you know, this, in this limbo state uh, that they haven't experienced before. And so we're just trying to navigate that carefully for all families. So typically, uh, the process can go a lot faster. And so we're also working through each time, like, okay, maybe we can speed this up here by, and still honoring the policy. Casby is working on a, a sample example because it's going to change. The state statute's actually going to have to change as well. So um, right now we're getting stuck in the middle of, of, of federal and state. And, and local, local control. So anything else, Colleen?
I would just say it, uh, you know, say thank you to our partners at the BOCs, but also just, just our building registrar is just going above and beyond. And Christina Baker, for those of you who are, is our district registrar. Um, and the, the immense hours that people have put in to, to follow the new rules. And have it not be a bureaucratic nightmare and be really honoring to families. There's just been an incredible amount of, of thoughtful work. That's been done in the last month and a half.
So it's something we have a policy in choice and I didn't bring that. I know there's a, a one-page document, which is the page after the page that was included. Uh, in the second attachment that has following the record you heard by our requested. So we basically, we will be unchecking five oh, there's sixteen things on there. We'll be unchecking five oh four plan because we can't ask for that anymore. And we'll be unchecking current individual education plan. Is that, that's really the change we're talking about. It's, it's one more page than, than got attached for.
That gets really anything that would go under the Office of Civil Rights. So anything, anything that's kind of a protected group under OCR is kind of how we've done it. Um, so that any, any child that has a plan, kind of that's governed by OCR. Um, is kind of how we've taken it and, and really being thoughtful to not being discriminatory in any way. But also being incredibly, um, you know, thoughtful in regards to um, caseload and supporting our folks.
I don't, I don't know which, where you got this one from.
And is that a record request? I think that's an actual.
Yeah.
Record request. So that's still included in a record request. What we've done is had to go to a two-step process now. So, because often a family might call and say, hey, I'm interested in attending your schools. And there might be a question asked right away about. Tell me about your child and any needs they have. And we've had to stop that process. So the initial choice application has removed all of those questions or check marks from it. And then along with it is a record request that does have those items on there because that's just part of any student's records that they would send anyway. Um, so uh, the initial admission is the first step process only based on our capacity issues at each grade level.
They don't do that until after they've reg, they've completed that registration. They don't complete this form anymore.
Correct. And not initially.
Yes.
They, they give the record request, like they will see that we're going to request those records. They give us permission basically or knowledge. That we are going to request those records, but we only request them after we've seen if we already have capacity.
This, this doesn't, I don't know where this isn't, this isn't any part of initial application anymore.
Okay, so that's the second step.
That's the second.
So we get this one page, well, two-page application, the choice application, so we get that.
Does that include gender too? I see male, female.
It's uh.
It does. So the main application says male, female.
Yeah, I know. The state of Colorado does not.
Okay.
When we do like end of year report. So.
I just was curious because you said office civil rights.
Is the choice decision then based only on capacity? There's no other, nothing else that goes into it?
The initial step, yes. Um, if we find out there are any other like reasons for denial, because there are some, and that's what we're saying. The state statute around choice is actually in conflict with IDA and ADA rules. So that's going to have to be teased out by folks higher than us later on. Um, but the initial step is yes, based on capacity. If we have room. Um, Christina communicates that with the family that there is an initial admission because there is room at that grade level. And then we request records and find out certain denial reasons are like expulsions within the last twelve months, things like that. So when we receive those records or, and they're invited to then register and complete all of our registration documents. And that's where there are questions about behavior on our all school property in the last twelve months, the expulsion. And then any plans or needs or health needs you might have. So all those questions are just still standard in our registration process. They're invited to register within the next five days. And so we did that and put a timeline to it because we know we're actually holding a slot then at that point. So if there are any legitimate denial reasons in this profile that comes back, then we can, you know, have that conversation. And, and know what our next steps would be. Um, and then if uh, if they don't fill it out in the five days, then it allows us to then. Say, you know, uh, Christina then communicates that they didn't kind of meet that timeline. They're placed on the waiting list. So.
Something like, for example, we are full in kindergarten at Manatee Springs Elementary School. So anyone who applies, we say you're, you're on the waiting list and that's just a very easy and hard conversation to have with a parent. But it's very, very easy. Um, but first grade, second grade are not full. So we really take this pathway. Um, but the concerns we have is looking to the next school year, not as much right now. But the impact and load on our, our, our special service provider, our, our teachers, we're going to have to run these IP meetings in the summer. Uh, so how are we going to do that? And what does that look like? Anything you want to speak to more?
Uh, yeah, just that in, already in policy, we have some of those capacity limits set for class sizes, for our caseloads. For special education and our BOCs, like in speech, we have caseload capacities there as, as well. So we're still looking at capacity as kind of that next step. If we have caseload capacity in special education, even if the student has. Uh, a disability plan, then we move forward. And then the next step might be to actually then hold the IP meeting. To determine if we can meet their needs within our school setting.
And the capacity numbers you're talking about, those are in J F B V R, is that right? Twenty-one kindergarten, twenty-three first grade. Twenty-five second grade and twenty-six is the cap from six through twelve grades. So we're following those guidelines. Or not guidelines, uh, that's, that's policies. We're following that policy.
Yeah, you, it's, you, sometimes it might happen that you have a full class, right at full class. And then you have a, an industry person who, who moves in. So I, I can tell you that if that happens and we get beyond. We're going to essentially be asking that, that the last in choice family to, that they can't be here. So it's a very um, hard conversation to have. We do have uh, special education limits in here as well. And that's so- something that's important for us to know.
And I think that goes a little bit back to your earlier conversation around the DAC question of retention of high-quality staff. Is, you know, being a special, being a public educator in any capacity is incredibly difficult. Um, but using special service providers takes a skill set. And uh, I think that's part of the retention piece, to be honest with you.
Speaking of, we did not have any turnover in our special education department from our licensed staff. So kudos to Marcy and Christina. That's a big deal. Most districts right now have vacancies in their special education department. So to our, to our teachers too, who's really thankful. Great group of people, yeah. So we'll keep you posted on changes, rule changes, impacts. And uh. We're just going to make, make sure we're doing the best through each of the moments and then changing our policy, making sure that each school is being consistent. That's probably the biggest thing. We want to make sure that it's consistent. So centralizing this has been helpful for schools right now during this, this transition.
That's the side note. How's enrollment going? I know it's not, the county's not blocked over, which is a few months away, but how, how are the numbers looking?
Yeah, um.
So if you have, you don't have, we'll talk about it later in the.
No, I have it right here. Um, seats right now that are taken are thirteen forty-four. I think Suzie budgeted this school year at thirteen thirty.
Twenty-five.
Thirteen twenty-five. Uh, so it's just a little odd time timing, really is. So.
And that's different from most school districts. A lot of school districts were budgeting for a decrease. And are actually, they, a lot of them already started and they are seeing less students than they expected.
Oh, by the way, on that note, I, there was a part of um, kind of connected, not connected, but I, I think it is important. Vanity was kind of cited in a report that's going to be released. And it's like, it's, it's really looking at the cost of housing for educators and what you can afford to buy based on your income. So it's embargoed through the sixteenth. Our name is, Manatee Springs is mentioned. I was just in communication with this group. So once it's un-harbored, it's really neat. I think it can connect to the DAC charge question uh, around affordable housing. So that's it for that. Unless you have any other questions. I, this is one of those things that if you hear folks in the community being frustrated with the process. Please let them know that it's uncertain, it was unexpected. And, and if there's something specifically, just tell them to reach out to me or principal or. To Marcy, but we agreed that this is really sudden. Also understand that there were some school districts that were. Uh, categorically denying and they did have room. So this is a response to some OCR complaints.
What were the frustrations are, have you heard?
It's going to be that typically, like right, and there's this five-day period, um, that now you have, you're, you're categorically, you're, no, you're sorry. You're conditionally accepting the students and then you get the records request and then you have to hold the IP. We've never had, had to do that step. So that's going to just delay, prolong the opportunity for students. Which may be good, maybe, maybe hard. But so that's, that's the timeframe of, of notification.
This is C D U that did that, not the legislature, is that correct?
Uh, it's an actual ECA rule, as mentioned by the state boards that they did in April. And we heard about it, but we weren't sure when it would go into effect. And we got the word that it was June thirtieth.
You said the state boards, but.
The state board approved that. Education Act, so our state special education rules, and they made changes within that and, and adopted them.
So they make changes and there's no legis, like Colorado revised statutes don't model this. So it will have to make it into the legislation. And I think it's going to be a very controversial topic across the state. So we'll see how it goes.
Right. Well, this is a good conversation. So I guess it just, I mean, they did kind of signature.
We were on a rural alliance call and they talked about it. Just, it just didn't have enough action behind it. People really didn't get notifications. I think there's a little concern about some of our, our associations in the state. Just we needed to do more and be more proactive. Documents I have here are just uh. Well, let me first start, but next, next month we'll start going back through our executive limitations. So um, I just added the things that we've done since that evaluate, since that approval of those, those monitor reports. Questions or concerns. I know that one of the things that Karen Reynolds mentioned that after. One addition as we start this next portion would be, for example, when you get yield one in a week or two, or next week. Might have some notes to consider. So that can be some ways that you're giving ongoing feedback. But I don't know if you have any questions about the things I've posted here. And I've also posted the, the org chart, um, with their new position.
So we go through these, like one of these every second or third meeting, something from, I mean, I know there's the calendar and I've got it somewhere up here, but.
You just, I mean, I'm just asking about your process. Do you, do you just have this open on your computer? You just add.
Like uh, the true speak. S R, the S R dollars just being in compliance with that. But uh, so when these reports come back up, you'll see some redundancy. Because this is just since these were approved. Get any questions about the org chart or anything? No, but I appreciate that you shared that. We posted it online and we posted in the handbook as well. That dotted line from HR director to Suzie is because payroll, benefits. Uh, workman's comp, all of that is not work that I lead, that Suzie leads with Kendall and others.
I would like to kind of quickly go through, once it's on the agenda, but we do have our, our new Gary caucus. I just want to make sure we're on, you know, same stage in terms of timeline for that. So we have. Uh, what this, we're meeting on, we have, we have our meeting scheduled for August second, but I don't think of anything involving.
We, um, we go to the, we go to the vacancy. So that's when y'all are going to select the three to be. So. What we'll want to do is put it as a board development. We'll have an action, my action item around selecting the three.
And then if that's where, then September first is when we do the records.
Um, I don't know if you all want to talk about procedure. Or selecting.
Um, is there a basic rubric that we can, that is available to Cassie or something that we can add?
I will, um, check on.
Haven't seen one. Uh, let me see what I can come up with.
It did this, the board did this four years ago. I don't remember. Oh, you, you, Biden didn't get in? Oh, we talked a bit about myself. So there must be some records of how they did it. Not that that way was perfect because that board is obviously way different than our current board, but. Uh, but I assume they did some research into it.
Well, so let me see, if you found a couple of.
Well, so let me see, it'd be a couple of rubrics, we're all working on that.
Um, Suzie, were you there for that?
I was, but I vaguely. Remember, I know that it was two.
Was in this room.
Was in this room. Yeah, so that was a long time, that was a long time. Um, so yeah, so I'll figure out, so that we're on the same page. I'll see if we have any documentation from that.
Karen Reynolds, so let me just double check to see. Any rubric.
Um, and I think everything too is that, you know, keep in mind that we'll get to ask questions, but that's September first. And so as you're reading through this. If you find out that there's like rules and what we'd like to know about the candidates, write it down so that we can ask that question in person.
So you'll be taking your vote on the top three. So wanna think about the voting structure? You vote. I would say you vote for each individually, but it's gonna be some no votes.
Do we do that in executive session?
I would probably vote for the top. There's gonna be four of us voting, five for, we rank them one, two, three, or we vote for the top. Three in the tally of the votes. That's probably how you do it, because voting each one individually could interview all five. I think that should be fantastic.
You could have split vote.
So you vote, if you vote, everybody votes for three in the top three vote getters, but. Probably the ones you'd interview. If you wanna give threes number, I think we did say we would do three.
Cause I'd rather not talk about what I don't like about each candidate.
So y'all need the rubric before you step into that meeting. When we take a vote on discussion, I just don't know how you're gonna take a vote for your top three, cause you typically take, make a motion for. Is this person, a person we wanna interview? Yes or no? That's the only way I can think of.
Let me think on it too.
And school districts are doing.
There were only, there were only like three, like I think they interviewed everybody.
That's what they did.
Yeah.
Oh, why?
Yeah.
Then how do they do their, do they discuss? Cause they, we have to just get from an open session. There's no, there's no reason to do an executive session. That's what they did. It was just.
Okay, oftentimes it's uh. It's good that there are five candidates.
Yeah, so. Um, just today, okay, so. I'll say by Monday, we'll have a rubric and. And then I do call in a vote, helps you all. So you can review everything and kind of do your own thing and then quickly if you want. And he will get to you sooner if he can.
Can I just ask, are y'all okay? Kendall uh, P D, sends a PDF of this to Tina since she's not here tonight. I don't know what her status is, but. Are y'all okay with that? Okay, great. We're gonna, we're gonna lose Kendall.
Where are you going?
Welcome to move to uh, for Collins. That is a big move. It's huge. Yeah, so it's in the works, but it looks pretty uh, positive. Yeah. Yeah, so not immediately, but um, it's in the works.
She, and she, we talked today, we don't know what changed for us in this structure till the end of September and. Uh, we're just, she's not a person you can replace. We're very sad that, from the, all the work that you do.
Well, and as a neighbor, um, you know.
There has to be a family with lots of kids. Maybe a single mom with one child can fit in her house. I don't think anyone else has put up with that for twenty years. Okay, and then, um. And then the other thing that I, I didn't add to the work session agenda, I'm still, I'm still new at this, but it's um, future agenda items. I think, I don't know whether we can discuss. So yeah, so that may be a little awkward this time, but I'll make sure next time that it's definitely on the work session to discuss that.
Is there an end stage statement? It's like, is the, the kind of the cookbook agenda, is that like? Or I don't have that.
Cause especially it's in job, it's like the board vacancy system. I think there's um. Yellow one, there's the board's purpose, Erica and Colin will present on state assessments, um. Uh, connect fourteen, partnership choices. I wanna provide you all with the safety update, so it isn't ad. For the, because there's such different changes for safety and security. So I really think towards that. Y'all hear that from Jamie. Um, at the start of the school year, and then we have the board, board vacancy. Suzie has the budget and. We also have fiscal management policy due. There, there won't be any changes to that policy. So it's a.
If you can get the stuff on before like you have, then that'd be great. And then count on the fact that we'll review it. So. The votes are good, the presentation's gonna have to do, no go line by line of Doc and Tiddle and stuff. They can get a high level over you that way. Questions we can. Ask at that point, or if there's questions before, kind of, we'll do it in the.
And not in this meeting, it's upcoming, but maybe next month or something. I know we've had some like. casual discussions about um, how things are working there at attorney and if there's other options and things like that. And then like to second. But just again, if there's just things out there. That you'd like to, to get on there, even if you can't, you know.
But you, and we could do that even in the work session in September. That might be a good time. They'll be open to adding that to the work session in September.
So the thing is, the next bar on this graph that you did for me last year, just to know where our license, this is license staff. So that's, I mean, that's been kind of consisting of that. I think you guys, I think we got this actually after a meeting. But just the next, the next bar on that would be helpful to know where we are.
Okay.
And then, cause again, we about to gather, I think actually last, we might have been the first year we got it. That'd be helpful just because, I mean, I've, over the spend, uh, a disaster for different reasons.
So this would be twenty two, twenty three? So this would start July first?
Yeah, it would be twenty one, twenty two. It goes July first to June thirty, so it ended June thirtieth, twenty twenty two. So that data is all available and. We've looked at all the, and the personnel reports we give the Vic consent agenda, all that information is, is done and available.
Yeah, it, it wouldn't really, in my opinion, uh, putting twenty, twenty one. Uh, yeah, twenty one, twenty two is what you're saying.
Yeah, it's the next, the next bar on the graph, that's all.
I think we have that already. We've already produced that for somebody.
We, I don't know that we had it in the bar graph. We had it in that um, HR report that had all. That a, like a.
Yeah.
Chart in there?
The chart.
That gives the.
So it wouldn't be too much work just to put a bar on here?
No.
Okay, excellent. That'd be great, if you don't mind doing that, just as.
I'm not gonna put that in and board. I'm just gonna shoot an email to you all. Is that good? Cause that doesn't create a lot of additional.
Does this change a lot with the new HR? Director coming on board? I think he passed this out a couple of months ago. It's uh, human resources update or is this all? I agree.
Yeah.
I saw her bio in the bulletin. Does she have specific HR experience? And it's just, it's been a principal for a long time at a couple of different places.
I think that, how do you wanna handle that question?
We can talk about it in the work session next time too. Okay. I mean, either, yeah, you can talk about it. I mean, that's, that makes sense to me compared to right now.
Yeah, that's right.
Um, but I do feel like it's, we, again, that's the part in terms of us, um.
Definitely.
Is that okay?
This is great. Yeah, there's no urgency. Or emergency.
Yeah. And then if you have a specific question for her, you may wanna shoot it to. Yeah, absolutely. She can introduce and say her background and that's, that's great. I think she'll love the opportunity. He's been excited to be a part here and is uh, already having an impact. So it's great. So I have for the work session, um. The dat- the attorney conversation and then the work session to also include. Uh, introduction to Sarah. That's the add I have. Great.
Right. Anything else? Thank you.
Wow, good job.